Welcome to Politi Fest 2020: Pick Your Future. I'm Scott Lewis, the CEO and Editor-in-Chief at The Voice of San Diego. It's great to be here with you. Thank you. In case you're not familiar with Voice of San Diego, it's a nonprofit news organization focused on San Diego, the San Diego region. We are committed to basically two types of journalism. One, we listen to what leaders say, make sense of it, and then we find out what they don't want us to say, or what they don't want to say. So that means we do investigative work, we do explanatory work, we try to help people understand their community so that they can become advocates for the public good and for good governance. So thank you all for coming and listening to this. I'd like to take a minute to recognize our sponsors who helped make Politi Fest possible. Special thanks to Google News Initiative for supporting the creation of this event. We had an idea of doing all the events that we normally do but online, and we needed some support and work on all that and practice for the year, and they came up. That was great. And I'd also like to thank the Colleges of Arts and Sciences at the University of San Diego, also the San Diego Foundation, Cox Communications, SDGNE, The Atlantis Group, City of San Diego Retired Employees Association, the City Heights Community Development Corporation, and the San Diego County Democratic Party and Business for Good, who have all sponsored different sessions or parts of this event. And I also want to give a hearty shout out to Gustavo Solis, who's hosting this today. He is an excellent reporter in San Diego, works for the Union Tribune, and thank you to the Union Tribune for allowing him to do this and to host this discussion. Very important for the future of South Bay and for the future of our region. And I'm so glad that we're able to do this. And with that, I am going to drop off and I'm going to hand it over to Gustavo. Thanks, Gustavo, for coming on, and I owe you something.
Well, thank you, Scott. Appreciate it. And like you said, I'm the South Bay reporter for the Union Tribune. For the last two years plus, I've been covering Chula Vista, Imperial Beach, National City, and I dip into Coronado every once in a while as well. And for me personally, I grew up in the South Bay, so it's very special for me to be able to go back to reporting to the places I grew up. And it is a special place. I think a lot of people who aren't from the South Bay don't realize the rich culture is over there, the fact that the county's second-largest city is Chula Vista. There are, between the entire region, almost half a million people down there. It's a vibrant, bicultural region. Great places to eat, and I'm not just about Mexican food. So it has a lot to offer. I'm glad we can shed some light and give the South Bay some love over here. And obviously, there are elections in the South Bay, so we'll be focusing on the two city council races, District Four right now. I'd just like to really get started by introducing every candidate, give you guys a chance to say hello to everyone. So why don't we go alphabetical order and start with Andrea Cardenas?
Hi, everyone. Well, first things first, my name is Andrea Cardenas, and I'm a candidate for Chula Vista City Council in District Four. I was raised in southwest Chula Vista and consider myself to be a product of this community. You know, from learning how to swim at Loma Verde to making my mom take me to the New Orange Avenue Library at the time to check out, you know, the first Harry Potter book. This community is my home. This is a part of Chula Vista where my parents decided to make their first home in the United States. They put all of their savings together and bought a home south of Main Street on Rancho Drive. This is also the place where my parents lost their home. For many years when I was a child, we faced housing and food insecurity, something that I didn't really understand until I was older. The thing is, my upbringing was not unique to me. Now, nearly 30 years later, people in my community in this district are still facing these issues and struggling to make it with their families. Like I said, my upbringing is not unique. There's a lot of people in our community that are still facing this. What is unique is the fact that at a young age, I got the opportunity to learn and to be engaged with my community. I learned the power of organizing and outreach very early on. And what started as community organizing for me and advocacy led to my career, helping draft policy and working with nonprofits and various government agencies, both here and in Mexico, to bring back resources to our communities that needed it the most. Today, I feel incredibly honored to have the opportunity to represent my community. I'm running because the people of District Four are in strong need of leadership. We need someone that will be able to amplify our voices and that understands a single fact, that it's just time to start meeting our communities where they're at. I'm looking forward to speaking to all of you today and answering any questions you may have. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you for that. And perfect segue to your opponent in the race, the incumbent councilman, Mr. Mike Diaz. Hello.
Thank you, Gustavo. Again, my name is Mike Diaz. I'm your council member. I've been serving for you for four years. And, you know, I was born in Tijuana, along with my sister and my other brothers. We moved here to the United States, right here in Chula Vista. I grew up here. I've lived over in this community over 55 years. And I went to Castle Park Elementary, Loma Verde, when it first opened up. I remember being one of the first classes there. Went to Castle Park where I met my wife. She's a high school sweetheart. We were married, still married, over 39 years now. That's a tremendous amount of commitment. I think it shows on my part. And after that, I became a U.S. citizen and joined the Escanito Fire Department, where I worked for over 30 years as a firefighter, retired, and then taught at Sweetwater High School. And so I have a tremendous amount of interest in this community. My kids grew up here. As a matter of fact, my daughter just lives about three houses down from me. We're a very close family. And I think what I want to show today is that we're going to show today all the work that I have done for the southwest Chula Vista community. I told you folks in 2016 that I felt that City Hall was paying more attention to East Lake and Oaxaca Ranch, and that the city had forgotten about us, and I was going to bring the resources back to west Chula Vista, which I have done. And I think we're going to show you that today, or you can always see my website at mike diaz for chulavistacitycouncil.org. And what I hope to show you tonight is that Cardenas is four years too late on everything. If you look at her campaign piece, you'll see in my website, we have done all the things that she says that she wants to get done. And so I look forward to this debate, and I hope it's very fruitful and educational for you. Thank you, Gustavo.
Perfect. Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Diaz. And last, but certainly not least, Henry Martinez. Unfortunately, you're the only candidate here representing the District Three race. So incumbent Steve Padilla could make it. Scheduling conflict, so we get the pleasure of spending the evening with you.
Well, thank you, Gustavo. That's why I'm running for Chula Vista City Councils, because we need a representative that is loyal and dedicated to our Chula Vista District Three 100%, like myself. My name is Henry Martinez. I've lived in Chula Vista for almost 17 years. Have two children that were raised in District Three Chula Vista, graduated here in District Three, and my daughter graduated from San Diego State University. I am the only homeowner running for Chula Vista City Council District Three. Married, like I said, 28 years. Very proud of my daughter. They graduate from San Diego State University. And to let everybody know, District Three Chula Vista, I will be 100% dedicated to the position, not like the incumbent sharing his time with other collateral duties that you did not hire or elect him for. I will pledge allegiance to Chula Vista residents and proudly serve them, just like I did for 32 years in the United States Navy to our country. I will only focus on Chula Vista District Three position. I will fight to create high-paying jobs, fix public infrastructure, protect family values, protect family values, keep our communities safe. I will maintain a perfect attendance at the city council meetings and have no intentions to run for any political office while I'm in. I will remain dedicated to Chula Vista residents 100%. I am the co-founder and honor our Veterans Parade Chula Vista for 15 years. I love this city. I love Chula Vista. I would be honored to serve you for the next four years. And I guarantee you, vote for me. I will stay in for four years. Thank you, sir.
Perfect. Thank you. Well, let's just get started. I want to focus on probably the biggest issue, at least that I think faces Chula Vista. Something I've spent the last couple of years reporting on in different aspects, and I think it touches on every single aspect of city life in Chula Vista. And that, of course, is the budget deficit. Right? Chula Vista has a structural budget deficit. As I'm sure you're all aware, the city's finance department is projecting year-over-year deficit growth to the point where it'll reach, you know, more than 10 millions coming up in the not-so-distant future. To help kind of right the ship, the city has passed two different sales tax over the last four and it's an obligation bonds to reduce some of that pension debt that they have. And I'm just curious to take everyone's take, to hear everyone's take on this, right? I'm curious to know what you think caused this problem and what you think are some of the solutions for it? Because it's definitely something that affects the entire region, and not just the people that live there now, but people that are going to live in Chula Vista years down the line. So why don't we start with the incumbent, Mike Diaz?
Thank you, Gustavo. So what has caused the problem? There's two things that are currently causing the issue with our budget, naturally COVID. And we really don't know the effects of it yet, but we will know very shortly. I know we're going to get a report in the first quarter, which is just about ready to end. So we will find out where we're at, and it'll give us a little bit more guidance on the things that we need to do to make sure that we have a balanced budget. And the other thing, the big elephant in the room naturally is the unfunded liability for our pensions. And so, you know, the question is, you ask whose fault that is. And really, when you look at the pensions, it's really, you know, there's we were all probably complicit in creating that problem. And what I mean by "all of us," it's the unions, who I was a union president during the times where we were getting those pensions. It was the community and as well as the cities. And again, if you look at the benefits, as a, you know, the unions, fire police, city workers, county, back in the 2000s, when the CalPERS was doing very well in their investment portfolio, there was so much surplus. And so folks decided to go out and benefit from that. And so we did. We got better pension formulas. But then, as the, I believe, this is the way I see it, as the makeup of the pension board changed, then we saw changes in investment policy, where the investment policy is no longer what's good for you or me. It's based on what's good for specific agendas. And so it's very political now. And I believe that is a big part of the problem in the pensions. So we're there in the community. You know, the community has always supported the pensions. I mean, I know back in, you know, there were many, many ballot initiatives where they tried to take away pensions, and the citizens said, "No, thanks." You know, we think that police and fire deserve those. And so here we are today with a big problem. And so how are we dealing with it? Well, the city of Chula Vista, we've decided to take a look at the pension obligation bonds. And if we look at the cost, currently, our unfunded liabilities are about $345 million. And what happens is every year, you know, we have to pay that down, and CalPERS charges about 7% on that. And the problem is too, is that every year, that pension cost goes up because CalPERS doesn't meet their goals on the returns on their investment. And so they keep falling short for the reasons I've stated before. And so how do we get away from that? Well, the way we do that is to buy out that unfunded liability. And we create debt on that, and we pay off the entire amount. And now we can refinance that, and rather at 7%, you know, we can get that to 3% where we can save, depending on the model that we take. And there's several different models that we're looking at, three different options. One is just to keep in a flat level payment. Another one is a 1% increase per year. And the other one is where we take a 1% increase a year in the payment of that to pay it off earlier. And also include other lease bonds within the city, where we can even save even more money at the current rate. So the council right now, we are currently looking at that. And I'm sure we're probably going to, I think we're going to get there. And that will probably happen in June of next year. And so there are a lot of issues that we're dealing with, although I think that we have, and I've made sure that we are properly funded with, as it relates to our general operating fund reserves, economic contingency reserves, and we have maxed out our general operating reserve. Our goal was 15%. We got there. And then after we got there, we had an economic contingency reserve fund. And we decided, you know what, we're going to put other surpluses in there. And we built that up to about $7.3 million. So I think that what the community needs to look at is, what has this council member done? I've made sure that as we go forward, that not only do we take care of our employees and the community and make sure that we have the services that we want, but also to protect those investments and make sure that we never have to cut service levels. And I think by really being very disciplined in our budget process and making sure that we get to our 15%, and then adding on top of that to our economic contingency reserve of $7.3 million, in the short term, we will be doing okay.
Thank you, Mike. Sorry, I want to give the other folks here a chance to chime in.
Got it.
Mr. Martinez, what do you think about that? Do you think that's an accurate diagnosis of Chula Vista's budget woes? And do you agree with that solution to at least get out of it a little bit with the pension obligation funds?
Well, I agree with what Mr. Mike Diaz said. He's on point on the information provided. Sorry that my opponent's not here, but I wanted to ask him, in reference to the economic forefront, you know, the budget crisis for Chula Vista, why do we make a big deal on the Bayfront project, you know, in reference to how much property tax can we get back? And this is going to be none, right? So I would like to ask my current council member about that.
Explain that a little bit, what you mean.
So the TOT, you know, for the Bayfront, the property value should go up, right, for each area? So the Bayfront, so that local area, property value should go up. But I bet you that the tax, the transfer occupation tax, 100% of each room, 10% of each room times the 30 rooms, or depending how many rooms, right, you get taxed up for each room, $30. That's some kind of revenue coming back, right? But how much property tax can we get from that area? None, because we gave it up for a deal for the Bayfront project. So that was one. How can we give up all the revenues that we need for a long-term investment? And our short term is, we had to pay our deficit. Money, so you gave a lot of monies, a lot that we cannot afford and to give up. So that was one thing that, you know, Chula Vista is going to pay over $1.7 billion in what we have to do to the commission, right, for taxes. But then, in order to make the deficit, we had an opportunity, one, to bring in high-technical jobs. We're bringing some jobs, servicing jobs for the Bayfront project, but we're not bringing high-tech jobs that we need here in Chula Vista. So that was one of them.
Sorry, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it sounds like you're saying you're being critical of the city council for maybe giving away too many subsidies in exchange for the Bayfront projects?
You're absolutely right. For my city councilman, yes. For my representative, yes. Giving up that Bay project, giving up, you know, certain job obligations or job, you know, requirements. So employment is one, but how do you bring employment plus balance our budget? So that's the part we have to discuss and work out.
Well, why don't you tell me a little bit about what your plan would be, right? It seems like everyone, every candidate I've talked to is in consensus that Chula Vista needs to bring more businesses to the city and maybe diversify the types of jobs in there. It's a lot easier said than done, right? It would have been done already. So what's Henry Martinez going to do about it?
Well, I'll tell you one thing, you know, I will work hard with elected officials developing, you know, local and country-wide comprehensive economic development strategy, craft specific measurable goals to bolster target sectors. You know, Chula Vista, there's five areas that I want to talk about. Chula Vista is a city where young people live and play. So that area, that number, that area lends for, I say, our residents that travel to work. What type of travel? Where do they go to work? What kind of skill sets are they going an hour and 45 minutes away from Chula Vista? What kind of skill sets? More technology, right, more satellite communications, engineering, supporting the Navy, right? And also working for Border Patrol. Why can't we bring the skill sets to Chula Vista? Why do I have residents here in District Three travel for an hour, an hour and a half? Why can't we, you know, in Chula Vista, I would say, now they're trying to get Millennium, you're right, for high-tech jobs, but that's kind of late in coming. They're not doing the proactive stance. All right, two, good data tells compelling story about your city, right? So we need to do economic performance, well-being of the population where entrepreneurs are located. Identify those entrepreneurs and invite them to Chula Vista. We have to position ourselves as an international, a global force. We're in the area that we have access to the sea ports. How do we advertise ourselves and bring in commerce from international ports? That's why I tell you, we've got to become a global force. With my background as a naval officer, I've been around the world four times, literally, right? That's what I want to make sure that we bring an economic force. We're here with Amazon Distribution Center is coming up soon. That's going to bring some jobs to Chula Vista, but also bring traffic issues and concerns. But then, how can we leverage that company to help Chula Vista in the future? Electing the point of visionary leaders like myself, Henry Martinez, convert Chula Vista to a real, young, smart strategy, Chula Vista City. So we have to hire young people. I know myself, I'm in the old way of things, so let's start thinking smartly. Have the young people get some good ideas and consult us about formulating Chula Vista to the future with high-technology, high-tech jobs. Identify and exploit or cache such access to shipping lanes. That's one thing Chula Vista has that no other city besides San Diego, access to the shipping lanes. So we need to make sure we exploit and advertise that Chula Vista is ready for travel from overseas and abroad, willing to commute and do commerce abroad. So that's what we have to make sure we do. Multiple free trading zones, industrial parks, and thriving tourist industry. That's what I would focus on. The city officials all over the world need to find Chula Vista, and then how vital and important Chula Vista could be to them.
Henry, Andrea, I want to turn it to you a little bit on a more, maybe hyper-local level, right? I know you mentioned yourself, right, you struggled with homelessness when you were growing up. And I know you've made the resurgence of west Chula Vista for your campaign, right? So how that off, how would you bring more economic opportunities to the people of southwest Chula Vista, who historically don't make as much as the people in Chula Vista and face a whole host of all their disparities?
Right. And I mean, the disparities that you're speaking about, they've been there for decades. And now, because of COVID-19, because of this pandemic, we've just seen them be amplified. You know, we talk about all of the issues that are happening with our budget, you know. Absolutely, it has to do with CalPERS and all of that. Even with all of the tax measures that we've passed and the budget cuts, we're projected to still have an $11 million budget deficit by 2026. And so really, what we've been doing this long hasn't been working. And so it's important that we take a step back. I think we should do a complete audit of all of our departments to understand where our money's going in the city and then reassess our priorities, which have shifted right now with this pandemic. This is the best time to do that, because we have, now we see them, you know, these disparities kind of elevated. And like you've mentioned, the communities of District Four are the ones that have been disproportionately affected. I think that for a very long time, we keep waiting for this one big company, like, I don't know, Amazon, to come in and solve all of our issues and all of our job problems. But I don't think that that's the best approach. I don't think that we need to wait for one big company. The reality is that District Four, Chula Vista, we sit in the middle of a bi-national region, and we have not tapped into that essential resource, you know. I have experience with bi-national affairs. That's something that I did for several years. I've experienced working with other governments and working with grants and whatnot on a nonprofit level. And what we really need to do is seek out companies, make it inviting to them to come. And it's by asking the question, what is it that you need from our city in order to come in here? What is it that you need to be able to provide jobs and opportunities for the people of our community that's so desperately needed? You know, it's having a conversation with our community and seeing what it is that they need or they would like to see there. You know, one example, and it's not everything, right? But one example is our auto area, right, on the east side of Chula Vista, which, you know, in essence, you know, it's a great idea, but we still only have, like, two big auto sales companies there. And people are still going to National City to buy their cars. So why is it that we are not creating businesses and bringing in businesses that are attractive to our community? You see Main Street, and we're full of abandoned warehouses. Where that can be, that's prime opportunity for mixed-use housing. It's prime opportunity to bring in other types of businesses in our community. There isn't one thing that's going to solve this. It's several things. It's not going to be the Bayfront that's going to come and solve all of our issues. It's not going to be opening up our marijuana dispensaries. It's not that. It's the culmination of things. And it's important to understand that. And really, you know, I'm running on the idea of, we need to stop this idea that we know better than the people we're representing, because we don't. We need to understand that we need to meet our communities where they're at. And I'm going to die on a hill saying that, because it's so critically important that we understand. It makes no sense to bring in businesses that our community is not going to engage with, or that's going to bring in the jobs that our community needs, the careers more so. It's having partnerships with our community college, with our labor unions that are doing apprenticeship programs to ensure that we are having a community that is thriving in every level. You know, our city is not going to, all of a sudden, have money to solve all of the issues, but we can work in partnership with our nonprofits, who are the boots on the ground, who truly understand our residents, who our residents trust, in order to ensure that we are providing the resources that they need, that our community needs.
Thank you. And in the beginning of that, you mentioned that COVID, Chula Vista was a great opportunity to reevaluate. What do you mean by that? Tell me a little bit more about it. I think it's an interesting point.
Well, I think at this point, we all have, all in a personal and in a broader level, been able to reassess what the priorities should be. I think that it's important that we see that, you know, District Four has the most amount, 91911 has the most amount of COVID cases. And why is that? It's because we are seeing a community that has multifamily homes. There is no way that people can just like, "I'm sorry, I'm going to take over this whole bedroom for myself because I'm sick." That's not the reality. It's people are not testing themselves because they're afraid that they're not going to, you know, be able to show up to work, even if they feel like they had exposure. These things have risen because of COVID-19, right? It's those fears that our community are living with that is not fair. It's just not right that our community continues to worry about whether or not they're going to make ends meet, whether or not they're going to have enough money to pay their rent. We need to be aggressive in advocating for our district and Chula Vista. We need to be aggressive in pushing forward policies and access to resources from our county, from our state level, and having those partnerships. You know, understanding what they can provide at each level of government is incredibly important.
Thank you. Mr. Martinez, I want to stay on COVID a little bit. I know you are a big business advocate. I know in the beginning of the pandemic, you helped form this group of social media that helped get masks out there and helped bring groceries and diapers and different things to people. But right now, what would be your approach to getting out of the economic hardships caused by COVID? Correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that businesses should be opened up rather than later, assuming they're done, it's done responsibly.
Give you the history of Chula Vista now, especially in Broadway, right? 300 businesses were booming in Chula Vista prior to COVID. Now, as of today, we only have 16 businesses opening, and then most of them are not coming back. And then, of course, Andrea just pointed out some issues and concerns with her district, which are similar to my district. So it sounds like Andrea was trying to also convey that we need to open up Chula Vista. So as of, you know, as of today, as of yesterday, Chula Vista had over 6,000 cases, right, at a 12% rate? And, you know, 2,204 per 1,000 population. As severe as the epidemic has been, the city of Chula Vista response prevented it from being worse or so, right? From being the second city, largest city in the county. The business activity and stay-at-home order caused delay, caused counts that plateaued and then fall. So we have issues right now, right? So the monies we're trying to figure out from our federal and state to help our small businesses are no longer available, right? By us doing some precautions like we did, right? Face masks, that's going to be the daily norm, washing our hands, right? Maintaining our personal hygiene throughout every day, improving that, right, to open up Chula Vista safely. Chula Vista now faces the next phase of the epidemic, right? The next phase of epidemic response to reopen Chula Vista with care. That's what we got to do. Medical expertise, we've got to use our medical expertise that are here in Chula Vista. Listen to our state and federal expertise. Caution and awareness of how bad the pandemic has been in terms of the families, education and jobs. We've got to make sure we teach everybody, inform, and then also the jobs. We have to educate our jobs. Reopening Chula Vista with, I would create a COVID-19 Recovery Steering Committee that would be established, working towards a successful, fiscally responsible pandemic recovery that strengthens the economy while protecting the city. strengthens the economy while protecting vulnerable populations such as District Four, such as District Three, all of Chula Vista and South Bay, not just here. I'll make sure, I'm the type of person that thinks about the South Bay Committee as a whole, protecting public health and safety.
I'm sorry to cut you off, to play devil's advocate, why should Chula Vista form a committee that does work outside of the city, not?
Because there is a.
Your dollars going somewhere else?
There, exactly right. There is a a opportunity to, if the monies for COVID-19 go to the general fund, how can I guarantee you that the monies will go to the proper areas? That's why we have to make a committee, the policy and legislation, communications, make sure the internal controls of the monies for the COVID-19 steering committee presents challenges of increase, because there's a possibility of increased fraud and misappropriation. How do I, how do I trust my my incumbent to to properly run my budget for COVID-19? I just want to make sure you understand that. The internal controls account, working groups will prevent abuse of city funds. I'll make sure that, you know, now that I don't trust the incumbent, because he's always has debt, right? Through the robust and demonstrated internal controls, the internal controls of compliance worker group will prevent and make sure financial administration and grant management is done correctly, citywide economic recovery is a must. It's my responsibility as a as a constituent to report to the city, but it's their responsibility to make sure they properly handle my taxpayers' money. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Diaz, I think you'd have an interesting perspective on this because you've seen it from the inside, right? You've had a first, a front row seat at the city's response to COVID. As things stance now, you know, with with the city, just throughout the pandemic, higher rates than the rest of the county. As things start now, what are you most worried about, looking forward over the next couple of months?
Well, well, I I I think that, first of all, I just, I just gotta, I just gotta say, there is a difference between the candidate, the my my challenger and myself. And I, I think everyone needs to listen very carefully, because I haven't heard any answers yet. There's a lot of hyperbole going on on the other side. But I'm in a position where I have to actually act and and make things happen. So I'm gonna tell you what I have done and what I think we should do going forward. And so when when this all happened, we took a lot of different steps in in the city of Chula Vista, but jointly as as a council. But myself, the first thing that I that I did, recognizing that we have certain groups that are, that can be targeted or can be much easily exposed by the COVID. And one of those is the elderly population, as we all know, that have medical conditions. My office, we went out and personally called on the phone, not an email, not a spam, not personally called over seven hundred households in my district and contacted those senior citizens and asked them, number one, how they are doing and any kind of needs. And what we did is we connected them to the services that they need. I think that's the kind of council member that folks want. We hear so many, many times that, hey, I have never had a council member come to my house, I've never had a council member call me. And that's what this council member is about. And that's, and that's what we, that's what we did to my office and I'm very, very proud of it. The next thing that we did.
Just to play devil's advocate, I mean, was that enough? Because this, the the efforts, and I applaud you for the efforts, but despite them, your district still has the most cases out of anywhere in the city.
Right. It it it, that alone is 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 not enough. But if you're the senior citizen that that doesn't know how to get to your doctor, it's everything. If you're that senior citizen that doesn't have enough to eat because they're afraid to go out of their house, that is everything, Gustavo. It it, what I have learned as a council member, my constituents don't give a hoot about what the regional GDP is. What they care about is the potholes, the speeders, the marijuana shops, illegal marijuana shops. And my opponent wants to put it every corner, next to every school, church, and you name it. We'll show you her records later on as as how she's backed by all that. Our community wants those simple quality of life issues that they don't enjoy right now, and we're doing that. Somebody talked about earlier, about, she did, about bringing businesses that connect to the community. Well, you know what? For example, the Christmas tree farm that is on Palomar by the MTS train station, we've been rattling the trees on that property for about a year and a half. We finally got a soup that is gonna go in there. You're talking about bringing businesses to connect your community. I mean, that is a, is gonna be an awesome amenity to our to our community. So going, what else have I done? It, as it relates to COVID, also, one of the things that we we kind of caught on early on was, hey, look, not everybody is getting the message, they're not getting the education that they need to learn how to deal with it. And so I reached out to our staff and said, hey, our our libraries have ten Wi-Fi spots. We need more. In my district, there is a digital divider in the gap. And so again, knowing this council member, I know my district, I lived here my entire life. And so we reached out and looked out, we can get more Wi-Fi spots. We were able to use PEG money and we were able to purchase over two thousand Wi-Fi spots for my community. And so we went out there and 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 distributed those in the community. And so we, and the other thing that we've done is, I would get calls and saying that, hey, I I I still don't know what's going on. And so we doubled up on our communications. Right now, we have asked our communications department to use every single form of media in in various different languages, in different forms to communicate with with our folks in District Four and in in all of all of Chula Vista. And again, we're doing so many different things. I can give you a huge, long list of all the things that 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 I have done on the city council, like eviction moratorium, creating business social distancing ordinances, creating the Third Avenue Recovery Plan, creating the Emergency Face Covering Order, the Tenant Assistant Program, where we've dumped over one point five million dollars to help those that can't pay their rent in my district. We're giving in the assistance through South Bay Community Services.
Let me just jump in real quick. Gustavo, who had a little bit of trouble with the connection, asked me to take over for a minute.
Yes, sir.
So I gotta stop you and give some other people some opportunity to get in there. You you have a way.
It's, it's, it's very, it's very tough when you've done so much and have only a short time to say it.
That's how I feel. My accomplishments are many. It's just crazy. Andrea, can you respond, please?
Absolutely. You know, um, I mean, there's several, that was just a very loaded answer from Council Member Diaz. But let's just look at the facts. If you look at how the city has handled this pandemic, there's just one thing that's absolutely clear, and that's that my district, District Four, has not had the leadership it needs. When nine one nine one one is the hardest hit zip code in Chula Vista, and we still haven't had a testing site in our district, that's unacceptable. Fine, we're finally opening.
We have multiples, we've had multiples, that's a full online.
I would appreciate if you didn't interrupt me, thank you. We're finally opening up one in October, and that's great. But why did we have to wait seven months when, since the beginning, we have been disproportionately hit with COVID cases? Why are masks right now in Chula Vista being distributed in two different districts, District Two and District Three, but not in District Four, which again, has the highest number of COVID cases? I'm sorry, Councilmember, but our district has been let down by you and your lack of leadership. When you have over forty thousand people in your district, seven hundred calls are just not enough. And you're absolutely right that we need to be providing information in a way that our community has access to. And sure, there's all these programs, but do, when our community doesn't understand how to access them, that is a problem and that is a lack of leadership from your part because the city has a responsibility to inform, but you have a responsibility to your constituents, which right now, they continue to suffer from all the disparities. They continue to suffer from the highest, people are dying in our district. It's not okay to say, well, I can show you this long, show us the long list of things that you've done, because right now, on the ground, people are still suffering, people are still dying because of COVID-19. And we have not had a strong leader that is out there advocating to make sure that we are getting the proper resources in our district. We haven't had that.
Do you see how there's no answers? There's no real ideas?
Councilmember, I did not interrupt you when you had your comment. I would appreciate it if you did not, yeah, interrupt me.
Let's let Andrea finish that thought and then we'll give you a chance, yeah, we'll give you a chance to reply. And it looks like Gustavo's back and he can handle that part of it. Andrea, finish that thought real quick.
Sure. Right now, we are, I am limited as a candidate as to how much I can do. I am out there, maybe making sure that we're giving out COVID kits for our communities, making sure that they have food, that we are, we're distributing all of these resources. We're making calls to seniors as well because that is critical. But you are the city. The city has the power to do a lot more than a candidate can do. You are not just a candidate running for officer. And it is appalling to me that you keep on saying we've done all these things when we continue to see the disproportionate effects in District Four.
All right, Mike, a response and then we'll, we'll see what Harry's perspective is or Henry's perspective is.
All right, so, thank you. So I I I just find it hard to believe that we have somebody that says they care a lot about our community and that they want to change it and that I have horrible leadership. If she's either lying or totally misinformed, because we, the county health has had a testing site many, many months ago, then after that, everybody knows that we open seniors, people, Google it right now, Google testing sites in Chula Vista.
That's not in District Four.
Well, we've had it in Chula Vista.
District Two.
So we have, hold on, so we have a testing sites, oh, by the way, the, so we have several testing sites throughout Chula Vista. My idea, and it was turned down, by the way, was to, and 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 speaking with the city manager, was was, look, I want to have the testing sites where our community goes, to the CVSs, to the Walmarts, all of these, to the Targets. If you go to any of those, they have, like, when I go to my doctor, I don't go to Kaiser, I go to Target when I need my flu shot or whatever, right? And so I said, let's, let's, let's put those testing sites in 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 those areas where our community goes. You know what? It didn't happen, that's how government works sometimes, but we have had tons of testing available.
Do you, do you acknowledge it wasn't in that particular district, though?
What do you mean? Well, right, well, so we have, what we, what we do is we work with the county. The county is the one that's that funds all of the testing sites through a private company, right? And so again, our job is to advocate, and this council member advocated to city staff to put these testing sites for our community frequents. Those are the Walmarts, the CVSs and all those things. And so, so it is, it is not as simple as flipping a switch, because there's a lot of different layers of government that are that are involved. And again, I I would ask that, as we go through these discussions, that we, instead of just providing anecdotal comments, that we give actual solutions to what we want to do.
All right, thank you, Councilman Diaz. Henry, do you want to make?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. You know, during the COVID-19, I didn't wait for city council members to tell me what to do and where to go get tested and how to take care of our people. It took upon three, three strangers to create a task force during the month of February. Three strangers came along together, created a O'Tyr Ranch COVID-19 Response Team, all volunteer source. Till this day, we're working hard. We even posted a schedule of providing foods and entity. Just to answer the question, there is a, there is a urgent care, we need a point at nine one nine one zero. There is the CVS pharmacy at, a point required for COVID-19 at nine one nine one one on East Palomar. So there is a, there's more testing sites in District Two and Four than there is any in Chula Vista besides my one and the Greg Parks. So for 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 me as a citizen, waiting for my my representative to do something, what we did in Chula Vista, District Four, District Three, should I say, District Three, Chula Vista, District Three, right? We took it upon ourselves to help each other out. I didn't have to wait for politics to play out. We took it upon ourselves. I think we did more, more results than than waiting for our mayor and 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 our incumbent to make a decision to help out the district. During the COVID crisis, I immediately created a led-in voluntary task force to assist our neighbors, the elderly as well, outside of my district, provided over five thousand masks, forty thousand rolls of bread, one thousand, a hundred thousand dollars of ground beef thawed ducks, milked and fresh. So Scott Lewis, for Henry Martinez, I'm not afraid to roll up my my sleeves, not afraid to work. And I have, I don't, I'm not gonna wait for legislation to play out and help me. I'm gonna take it upon myself, be a proactive leader, a proactive activist, a positive activist for Chula Vista, to make it happen for our elderly, our children and our people to be safe. Here we are today, wondering what we're gonna do and open up Chula Vista the safe way.
Thank you, Henry. And I'd like to apologize for connection issues, part of COVID, so sorry about that.
Now, we had high-tech people to help you out in Chula Vista, I would have been taking care of that problem.
Yeah, it should be down there. A university heights internet connection is not very strong right now. I think everyone's probably blasting their AC. Maybe we should talk about climate warming or something. I do, I want to shift to to another serious topic and one that, you know, as a reporter, I really haven't seen be discussed too much in Chula Vista. And that's the current conversation, the national conversation about police community relations. You know, there was, around the time the budgets were being done in June, there was a push to, well, it was called defund the police, but the push was really to reallocate some of the resources and rethink the role of police in communities. Chula Vista didn't, as far as I could tell, didn't really have that conversation. So I want to hear from the the candidates to just kind of talk about where you stand on that. You know, I know Chula Vista is very supportive of its police department in general, and it passed a sales tax to increase the amount of spending on police. The current budget didn't decrease anything, it's actually expanded, invested more in the police department and not just in personnel, but with technology through like the drone program, for instance. So I just kind of want to get a sense of where you are in in that national conversation that I think is important to have, especially considering the fact that Chula Vista is a minority-majority city. So why don't we start with with you, Andrea Cardenas?
Sure, I've actually been very vocal about this on a private and personal and a public level. First, I want to say I absolutely believe that Black Lives Matter. I think that we need to tackle this situation on multiple levels. We obviously still have, you know, crimes that are being committed. We obviously have a mental health care crisis that is happening in our communities. We have homelessness and we still have a situation of racial inequity and and systematic oppression. All of these things are living at the same time in our community. One doesn't like eliminate the other. When we're talking about what are cops, what are the role of our police officers should be in our community, it shouldn't be to address mental health care issues. We need to have an aggressive partnership with our county to ensure that we have the resources to have mental health professionals, that we have social workers that are addressing these concerns, because that is not the role of our police officers. I absolutely believe that we need to reassess how we do policing in our communities. I absolutely believe that black and brown people get overpoliced. We are fortunate in Chula Vista that our police department has a great community relationship, a great relationship with our community. Does it need to improve? Absolutely, especially at a time like now where people don't trust, there's there's distrust of our our police departments everywhere. I think that.
As a council member, how would you see your role as as oversight over the police department, right? In the hierarchy of the city, the mayor is above the police chief and and really, you are the bosses of the police chief.
Correct. So we need to demand accountability. We need to understand where we, you know, right now, our our police officers received a raise. Some people were not happy with that, it, some people were, you know, because there's different reports about, you know, the the amount of funding and and level, several level of staffing in our in our police department. However, the point is that we have yet to see like an audit of where our police department is allocating their resources. There may be that we just need to invest more resources. We need to absolutely fund the resources to to stop, you know, crimes like domestic violence, like homicide, that's absolutely something that we need. No one should feel unsafe in their communities, but it goes into so much more and the understanding of public safety needs to be coming from a holistic perspective, where people, we need to address, again, mental health care, we need to address homelessness, and that is all part of public safety. And we don't always see it that way. We see it from a very strict lens of what it should and shouldn't be, but what we've seen is that that hasn't worked. And so we need to reimagine what that looks like. We need to make sure that we have accountability from our police department to to make sure that our our communities are taken care of.
Thank you. And Councilman Diaz, I want to hear from you specifically, because I think you'd have a unique perspective on this. Obviously, you weren't a police officer, but you spent thirty years as a first responder with with the fire department. I'm curious to know whether we ask public safety staffing to do too much right now, right? When you hear about the the high number of nine one one calls or non-emergency calls, is it, is it kind of what you signed up for, what you trained for, or have we put too much responsibility on our public safety personnel?
That's a really good question. And again, I think the the audience really needs to listen to solutions. Who's really offering solutions? If you're. If your solution is, let's imagine, as my, uh, as my opponent said.
It was not it, not just imagine.
Right. So I, I'm not gonna imagine, uh, as a thirty-year firefighter, my job was action. It wasn't to, to talk. And so let me tell you what, how I see this. To answer your question to begin with, um, as, uh, our, our police department really is defunded, if you, if you, if you look at it. I mean, what, first of all, can anybody define what defunding means, right? What is the measurement?
Well, I can tell you, Chula Vista spends more now on the police department than it did before the.
Right, right. But hold on. So how do you, how do you measure that? I, I would suspect, I would suspect that you measure by, uh, dollars per capita, right? It, in, in the county, before we even got to this mess, we were spending, Chula Vistas were spending, and I'm sure, uh, Cardenas knows this, um, but I'm gonna in, inform her, a hundred and ninety-nine dollars per, um, uh, per capita in the city of Chula Vista. Right next door to us, National City, was spending three hundred and eighteen dollars per capita. We were the lowest-funded police department in the region per sand day, okay? When we did our, our, our Measure A and we enacted a half-cent sales tax on our people, all, all that did, and so we're talking about numbers now, all that did is tie us for last in the county. We were so far down below that it just tied us, uh, to, to, to dead last, so.
Half of the, sorry to cut you off there, but we're running out of time a little bit.
Yeah.
Uh, so half of National City's general fund budget goes to the police department. Is that, should that be an example? Is that where you'd wanna see Chula Vista one day?
Uh, n- n- no, because what, the, the way I, the way I would like to see, uh, uh, is the measurement of what you're doing. So for example, right now, my goal in the city of Chula Vista is to someday, and I think we're getting there, by the way, because we've, we've actually added, uh, uh, a, a lot of different officers, um, in, 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 if you measure A, forty-three new positions, to be exact. I wanna see us to be, get back to, um, a community-oriented policing, where our police officers can spend time with the community, can, can go to schools, can go out in the public and go with the businesses and, 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 and business owners and, and talk to them and find out what's going on in their beats. And so we can identify the, the, the issue. Let me tell you, as a, as a fire, as a firefighter for thirty years, we, we would go out and do inspections of every, every business, and, um, and we thought, wow, we're gonna get rid of our, our jobs. And we did, actually. We reduced fires by a lot because we were out there in the community. I think that that same model will work with police departments. If we get our police officers out in the field and to, and to have that connection with the community, we will make huge strides. The problem today.
Sorry. Well, I wanna give, I wanna give, uh, Mr. Martinez a chance, because he hasn't chimed in in a bit. So just to, to, to wrap up, uh, Mr. Martinez, where, where where do you stand on this national conversation?
The national conversation, I stand as I honor our, our veterans. I honor our police force. I honor our firefighters and our first responders. They're our first line of defense, to include the Chula Vista city workers, the public works. Without public works, nothing works in Chula Vista. So we make sure that people understand.
These are competing interests, right? It, it's about priority, right? So for example, in Chula Vista, the police department budget has gone up, but the library budget has gone down. So you can't support all of them.
No, you can't, but public works, public works in reference to supported the entities of firefighting, the first responders, police force, the police engines. I'm an operational-minded person. Without those pillars working, how can I defend the Chula Vista residents? That's my point. So all of it, I'm honoring the veterans. I know you're trying to wrap it up, but I'm sorry that my opponent is not here to pose that same question. I wanted to ask him, why is he running for a four-year term but plans on staying and perhaps two years, right? Everybody knows that he's filing, he's gonna run for senate twenty twenty-two. I'll let the taxpayers.
Well, I don't know if I should kinda talk about that without him.
Well, just let you know, I just wanna be informed. People need to be informed about voting, right? Let the taxpayer pay for a special election. Wow. So he's gonna be, if he, he's elected, he's gonna be for Chula Vista City Council District three for two years.
You to stop. That's a little speculative at this point. He's not even here to speak for himself, but.
It's, it's in the paperwork here. It's filed, he filed in public records.
Thank you, everyone, for your time. Thank you. Audience, sorry, couldn't get to all of your questions. I know one of them, um, I believe Rita was asking about state and federal funding to the city. Keep an eye on coverage. We're definitely on top of it. If the UT isn't, Voice of San Diego, I know is. And obviously, feel free to reach out to the candidates and their websites. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Gustavo, and thank you to all the candidates. I know how hard it is to run. I've watched you, uh, folks, uh, for years and others run for these seats and, and I'm, uh, I think we all are grateful you put in that time. We know there's a lot of sessions, uh, for Politfest, and you can't attend them all. The recording for this and others will be available tomorrow by noon. You can also use your Cvent guide to connect with other attendees and learn about, uh, speakers and sponsors. So on behalf of Voice, thank you so much, Gustavo, uh, and to the candidates for coming, and, uh, hope you have a good night and go Padres, maybe a little better tomorrow, huh?
Thank you very much. Take care.
Thank you so much.
Bye, thank you.